You're ready to roll? Everybody? Hey, good evening, everybody who's joining us in person and online. We are at our January 18th workshop. Workshops are less formal session where we sort of take deeper dives on topic areas. And then this week we're touching on aspects of visitor management. But I want to open the meeting two ways. One, to recognize that the village lost a giant in the last week. I did not know this when we were in session last week, but Anne and Pelizari died. And Anne was instrumental in the development of the comprehensive plan and the local waterfront revitalization plan. She was a solid community member, so devoted. She was so smart. She was an early female executive in the corporate world and, you know, sort of elbowed her way to the top there and then brought that management skill set here to the village. And I will say that she was a very solid mentor to a lot of us who now sit on standing boards and ad hoc committees and on the board of trustees. So wherever you are, Anne, thank you for everything. And you'll be missed in the village and we owe you a great debt of gratitude.
You're a great neighbor too.
Yes, right, great neighbor. You were right next door to each other, right? Um, so first opportunity to vote to add and modify items. We had something come forward from water wastewater department late this afternoon. So I would like to make a motion to add a brief discussion of repair of valves at the water treatment plant. May I have a second? On favor? We can knock this one out of the way quickly. So there are, and I'm not with the water superintendent, so I can't explain this in any greater detail. Then there are two valves that need to operate. One of them is down completely and the second one, we're relying on the second one until the first one is is back up. So that one should needs to be assessed too. So the company that services these valves is Harper Haynes Fluid Control. It's a sole source provider, meaning we can't go out to bid nor really can we go out to bid because we need to make sure these are working quickly again. So the Matt Krug has gotten an estimate from Harper Haynes. It is $5,272. If anyone would like to look at the actual parts of labor. But I would like to make a motion that we authorize that expense so we can get that valve repaired and the second valve checked. They have a lot of options where we vote. Yeah, we aren't a lot of options.
But there's still, it's possible to operate with.
Yes, it is possible to operate with. That's correct. No concerns with existing water quality with that one operating, but we want to be sure that that one, the backup doesn't fall down. Yeah. Got to do it. Got to do it. Okay, so you seconded, yeah? So all in favor? Okay. I'm not aware of any announcements. Anyone else? Clerk? Okay. So on to our primary topic. And we're going to open with parking and inter related issues. And Eliza's going to, she's been the lead on this, so she's going to turn over the presentation. And we do have slides available as a basis for the conversation. Get them up.
Thank you.
You've changed that one.
All right. Um, so we've been about different issues relating to tourism. Oh, oh. We'll have to wait.
Some connectivity issues. This is the downside of messaging for the people who sit in the audience. The actual item.
Let's hear. So we'll start.
She just reached down.
I don't want to go. Having technical difficulties, one moment. There we go. So, um, at the crux of the issue of tourism here, it's that we have a 19th century village and we have a 21st century society. And the two don't naturally go together between traffic and human behavior. So you can turn to the next slide. So the village is trying to think ahead and tourism has really kind of increased immensely in recent years. Over the past, I think, five years, it has just continued to skyrocket. We get covered in the New York Times at least once a year. Hudson Valley Magazine covers us bloggers. There's, you know, we get so many posts at this point, we're no longer a secret. And I would say society has really shifted towards this nature outdoors, healthier lifestyle, day tripping kind of experience. So here tourism is huge, but our resources are still small. We still have the same resources that the village has always had. We still have a 2,000 person population and we're mostly run by volunteers and we have a tiny budget. So while tourism keeps the local economy healthy and makes our main street vibrant, which is something that I think many residents enjoy and appreciate. The next slide, yep. It also brings a lot of challenges. So those are crowds and we've all seen that traffic jams. Good parking pandemonium, nobody can get parking on Main Street and fill. And we've, we've seen that can overflowing way too many times. So I think everyone kind of knows the problems that are caused by tourism. And, and fjord trail is coming. So that's only going to draw more people here, which means we need to manage the resources and provide infrastructure so that those problems that were just listed don't get worse. Go ahead and change it. So, um, for over, you know, a decade since 2008, villagers have been laying the groundwork for managing these problems through parking plants and other means. And this year, the parking plan in particular is finally ready to be implemented. So the plan includes the following elements. Parking on the side streets near the business district will mostly be limited to residents with permits. So we're protecting the permit or the parking for residents on side streets to make it more comfortable as a result and as a response to people saying they can't find parking on the weekends. They'll be parking on Main Street that is metered on weekends and holidays. And that's again, to try and reduce the traffic and get the turnover of cars to move faster. So people aren't parking all day long and also to provide revenue. Fair Street will also be one way on weekends and metered on Saturdays. So while we're still preserving the tradition of keeping it available for churchgoers on Sundays, we're going to make it metered on Saturdays to add to the revenue. And part of the reason we're doing that is because we're adding more space to crosswalks and using some parking on Main Street. So that's going to kind of recoup the parking that's lost and the revenue from, from metering. While we're doing this, we're going to update our traffic and safety signage throughout the business district and throughout that whole sort of parking area that we're working on right now. And that includes improving and widening the safety buffers and sight lines at crosswalks so that pedestrians feel safer and are safer while they cross our streets. So the other piece of this is communicating it to the public, to visitors, to our residents. And we intend on producing new signs, webpages to provide visitors with maps and directions to public facilities, including parking areas. And we're really going to be encouraging public transit for people who are coming from the outside in so that we can reduce the car traffic, which I think is one of the biggest congestion issues right now in the village. The policy for tickets, ticketed events and commercial festivals in the village will be reevaluated. So we're looking at the different revenue streams that are coming from tourism. And we're trying to really pick and choose which ones provide us with the most revenue and have the least impact, especially where cars are involved. And we're seeing with these ticket events, they draw a lot of cars, people parking all over the streets. And the revenue is not frankly that high from them. So it might be something that the village reconsiders. So in that vein of thinking, generating revenue from tourism to offset the management costs for years, visitors or rather residents have said in Village Hall has always believed that our residents' property taxes should not be paying for tourism, should not be making bathrooms pleasant for tourists. So then we need to be getting, collecting a revenue stream through tourism. And we can do that through parking meter fees, through better parking enforcement, through short term rental and hotel room tax for overnight guests. And we will be addressing short term rentals as a part of our sort of tourism management planning as well. But we're going to have a presentation on that in about two weeks.
February 1st.
Yeah, thank you. February 1st with Jennifer Sorak, who's the Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee on the Short Term Rental Code Updates. And then boat docking permit fees is another place that we'll be looking at collecting revenue. So the trustees continue to engage with Hudson Highlands fjord trail planners to advocate for cold springs needs and to gather insights for future planning in the village. And I think this is something that's causing a lot of anxiety for villagers because it isn't really clear what the impacts are going to be or when it's going to happen or where it's going to land exactly. But we're coming to the table and we're participating and we're gathering as much information as we can because if we can't control what is coming our way, at least we can plan ahead and do things like, you know, putting in resident permit parking in areas where we anticipate visitors from hiking trails, parking and on our resident streets. So that leads us to revision and expansion of the parking plan. After the launch of the parking plan, the village will evaluate its effects and consider whether revision or expansion is needed. So right now we're focusing on this, but go ahead and click it. We'll be looking at these areas in the future and then click it again and possibly these areas too. So these are streets that we feel if, you know, you make parking harder in the center of the village, are then visitors going to start parking on further up streets? And is it going to spread? That we kind of expect may happen. And so we're going to be watching really carefully and collecting visitor, I mean, collecting resident feedback and hoping that everyone will just provide the feedback of what they're seeing happening on their streets as these plans go into place so that we can then start planning to prevent further challenges on other streets.
And Eliza, if I may hop in before your fabulous end. Can we go back one? Neither. This process is, we're laying the groundwork for this process. This takes some time, working with State Senator Rob Rollison and our Assembly Member Dana Levenberg. New York State, and we are a home rule state, but villages can't establish their own parking districts. So the orange portion, the groundwork for that was laid with enabling legislation in 2015 and 2018. We need to ask the state to allow us as a village to identify, to expand the resident parking areas if we would like to do that. So we are in process now of making those requests to the Senate sponsor and the Assembly Member sponsor so that we have in place that legislation when we're ready. So you will see coming forward in the spring, late winter, early spring, resolutions from this board making formal requests of our state representatives. Now the big closer.
So smart planning will ensure cold spring keeps our authentic village charm into the future. So while the population and people will continue to change, we really want to keep our village the same. And I think that's why we all live here. We love the way it is. We love how charming it is. We love village scale. We love the beautiful environment around us and that's what we're trying to really preserve and protect. And that's it.
The mayor should have a helmet on, just like the man.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, start with Jeff D.
Yeah.
It is very helpful to have the expanding areas visualized. You know, Undercliff experienced such heavy impacts last year. Grandview, Velvet Deer, White Hill. Going blank on the last, why do I always go blank on the last? Hamilton. And I think that's, that's one of the areas we really have to look at because of its proximity to.
Yeah, and I think the waterfront, you know, needs to be reevaluated. The, the permit system was put into place there, but it was never really properly signed and it's not real clear and there could be metering down there too, to sort of reduce the congestion and monetize it. So there are a couple of areas that I think will be really important to start looking at quickly after we finish implementing this.
Isn't there, isn't there already enabling legislation for below this?
Because that had already been put into place. We didn't touch that for this phase. And what we're really focusing on is getting this upper main done, getting the meters done, getting the resident parking done, because that's sort of the most congested area at the moment.
So but resident permits are already issued in the lower village. What's not included right now is the, is the metering of Main Street, that portion of Main Street. We were trying to implement what the parking committee put forward into last year in as faithfully as possible in this first round and then move into the potential expansion of frankly, metering lower Main Street and up. I mean, we are, we are watching as folks are parking all the way to the village line and beyond, which is why you would also want to expand resident parking too. Because once you're metering up Maine, you, you're going to have folks going out of the side streets there. We have been in contact with the DOT about how that process works, how we, we need, we need a permit. The village is allowed to meter on that state road, but we need a permit from DOT. So we, we know what we need to do. We have to start the process. But for now, I think, I think, Eliza, your goal was implement, implement, implement what was put forward by the parking committee.
The parking committee is the orange district there. And that's a big piece of work, just evaluating all the signage there and all the crosswalks there. That was a huge effort to sort of assess. I think I was out there with a tape measure, measuring the size of everything on the streets. So I'm excited to see that implemented and then I'll start taking on new pieces as, as it needs to be done.
Did you, did we ever come to a conclusion about whether we can at this point meter lower or Maine? Or do we have to do something other than just meters down there?
It's the implementation of the meter.
Just the implementation.
We have a crowd in the room. I guess we'll open, we'll open to folks in, in the public with us here. And then we'll move to hands that are raised online. I see about 20 folks online.
Before, maybe you could just lay out kind of what's the process from here? When does the, that might also help, help folks understand when, when our decisions be made.
So the process from here is ordering signs so that we can get the, the signs in and, and the highway department will work on putting sign cold bus and getting, switching out signs.
And we have that bid done.
Right. So that, that's sort of starting now. But in addition, we need to update the code, chapter 126 and 127 to make sure that all of the sort of changes that we're making with the fair streets, the way on Saturdays, excuse me, and other tweaks from the parking plan that have come into place, like the improvement of the crosswalks in many of the locations that weren't put into the code. Those kinds of changes have to be put into place. So.
And public hearings.
Public hearings have to happen so that everyone can review them and comment. And then the village will have to go through the adoption process there. So that's the next step. Then I would say, you know, that I hope to happen between now and the spring. And in the spring, the highway department will be putting the signs in. And I'm, I'm hoping that we can get this live, like the meters and the residential parking simultaneously in the late spring, early summer, June, July time. That's the goal. Things always take longer than we expect. And I think this is going to be a major change. It's going to be uncomfortable for a lot of people, for everybody, myself included. So I think, you know, it's going to take a lot of patience. And like I said, feedback is really welcome because we want to make sure what we're doing works.
I think it's also important to emphasize on that point, Eliza, that change, change is always hard, right? We, folks were just losing their minds about garbage when we switched to Royal. And now no one notices the Royal trucks. Change, change does, it's bumpy. But just the way we did for garbage, even through that bumpy period, we will be responsive and we will make changes as we need to, and we will be very transparent about it in public process. You can expect, I mean, I, I know not everybody loves their blue bin, but I think, I think we came out on the other side with a, with a strong, a strong process that works well. And we're committed to getting through that hard part together again. And I would just ask that we all be patient and kind to each other as we all work on it together. What we're, what we're getting to here is, what we're trying to get to here is retaining and improving our residential quality of life. And it's going to take some experimentation and flexibility and I hope we can all have it. Anything else from the board before we, was your question addressed?
Yes, I have been thinking that it would be probably helpful to create like a one pager that explains for everybody, like how are the, the resident permits going to work? And like, what would that process be like? Answer some of, in the way, maybe there was like an FAQ.
Yeah, which when we get to that stage, we'll have it for sure. That's a great idea.
And we'll certainly, this is not the last public conversation. In addition to public hearings, I'm sure we'll be working out as a board, we'll be working out details going.
Yeah, okay. I think that's probably just helpful to say that this is still, we're not at that decision making stage. We're still in the discussion.
We're updating where we are now.
It's a really long process and there's a lot of steps between here and when it's actually in place. But we're, we're getting there, moving closer every month.
When we have big crowds in the audience, we tend, we attempt to have village residents speak first and then shift to folks who are joining us from outside of the village. I see we have a lot of Phillips Town neighbors on as well. Are there any villagers in the live audience? Go ahead, Irene.
Hi, Irene. I'm Irene Piazza. I live at Six Paulding Avenue. Hi, everybody. Thank you. This is really helpful. Just for my own clarification, so it goes up your orange parking district that would be metered or and or have residential permit that goes up to Chestnut or 9D? It ends there?
It ends at 9D, yeah. Although that crosswalk at the light will be, will be adjusting those crosswalk buffer zones there.
Meaning?
Increasing the sort of, there's.
On the village portion of the street.
Yeah, on the village portion of the street, you, you sort of protect a wider margin off of the crosswalk so that there's better sidelines from the road.
We only have control at that intersection of one leg. So from the light down, Main Street is a village street. From the light up, it's a state road. And the same with 90, that's 301, yes, and 90 is a state road as well. So they control those intersections. The part we can control is below the crosswalk, below the light.
So I do live in the village. I pay a village tax, but I don't have residential parking. And I live in the historic district, so I have, you know, a lot of constraints on me. So my concern is just like you're saying, the push up. Because whenever there's a maker's mark or whatever it is, 9D along St. Mary's and then all of it comes up. And, you know, for the most part, for, again, I'm in the minority about this. Weekend uptick, you know, is, is what it is, you know? But I'm more really concerned about people storing their cars versus parking their cars. Leaving their car parked in front of somebody else's address outside of the permit parking area for months on end. And this is something that's happened before on my street. It comes up, people who are maybe weekenders or whatever the story is. Again, it's legal, it's nothing like that, but they will leave their car nowhere near their own address and they will leave them there for weeks or months because they were storing the car outside versus parking the car, which is a transitory type of situation, right? I have a driveway, that's where I store and park my car. Correct? So that's just, again, I, one of these questions that are going to come up is going to, it's going to blow. And so I'm just putting it in your minds now of how to perhaps mitigate that or have a civil conversation about that in the future.
So I think two issues, the, the car being stored on the street, I don't, I'd have to ask.
Something we need to talk to.
Yeah, we have to talk to the officer in charge about that.
They have a license, they're registered and so they're allowed to park there.
Correct. There are rules at the moment that I know of, but.
Well, we need to confirm. I don't know that there is an indefinite period. We will confirm that.
That's less of a tourism issue, but I hear what you're saying about cars coming up your way as tourism increases and then there's less parking down lower. So definitely anytime you notice it, an uptick, take pictures, send them to us. We want that data. That's really helpful. It's not complaining, it's really helpful. So just send it, please.
And that's the whole purpose of looking at, at blue and purple. You know, for, for a long time, there was this perception that it was so hard to change the state enabling legislation. And it is not, it is not easy. It's a process, but no one's made the ask. So that's why we're starting now by making the ask. And I think we learned a lot from going through the request with Senator Scoopus and Assembly Member Galaf requesting the ability to tax overnight accommodation. That was, was a reasonably quick process. So we thought, well, all right, let's, let's start what we have. What we have in the orange area is a good beginning, but let's also be thinking at the same time about where we go from here. So there is going, there's no question, there's going to be a period where visitor traffic gets pushed to other parts of the village and we're working toward expanding what areas we're able to protect and what areas we're able to monetize with revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Steve Smith, 44, Paulding Avenue. Two questions. One, you said you're going to readdress the spacing on the, basically the, the crosswalks, the space where you're, I guess, arriving to on the vehicle. Because I know that's been an issue for years. The parking's too close. You don't see the pedestrian in the, you know, where. The other issue with that is I also see that where the pedestrians are crossing the street, you know, like, do the pedestrians really know what the legal law is for a crosswalk? Because most of them step off the curb. As soon as they step off the curb, they have the right to walk across the street. Because a vehicle already approaching is within the distance of, then really the vehicle. Because a vehicle already approaching is within the distance of, then really the vehicle has the right of way. Like a person still has to wait for traffic, even if it's, I get it if it's four cars back. Person has the right of way, you should be able to stop. But if you're right there, you don't have the right because you stepped off the curb. You know, where most people do, just like down here in the bottom Main Street, they come from behind a building. You stopped at the stop sign on Terrace. You're going to Palatito on Main Street. Just because you're walking, stepping off the curb doesn't mean you have the right of way. Your vehicle already stopped, the vehicle now is in movement. You know, there's different things where people should really look into understanding what legal laws are for crosswalks and everything else too. And the other thing is on the parking meters or the passes, that's just holidays and weekends?
Main Street, so Main Street parking will be metered only on holidays and weekends. So the rest of the week, you can come down to Main Street and park for free. No problem. It's just weekends and holidays when it gets the most congested that we're going to do this system for now.
Now, it's basically the same system that you're using down at the field.
Right, yeah.
So each space has a sign with a number on it. So are we saying everything?
Every space won't have a sign.
Off to, on Main Street. So you're not, you're not numbering the spaces on Main Street?
It's an app base.
Correct. But, that's an app base, but how do you know if they're not numbered or ID'd? How does the officer?
Your license plate.
Okay, so there's not going to be signage, more signage on the, okay.
That's one of, I mean.
We're numbering.
Folks are frustrated because it's taken so long to implement, but on some level, thank God it took a long time to implement because if you remember when this conversation began in 2008, 2010, we were talking about the physical installation of meters up and down Main Street. And now you think, oh my God, if we had done that, how horrible it would have been. So there is, there is one pro.
Because the thing is, is that basically like, how do you do it? Because we don't do, we don't slot the spaces anymore on Main Street.
So it'll be zones.
Right. And then, for instance, is there like a construction or, you know, contractor pass? If you're working on a holiday or whatever and you're going to work on Main Street, is there a pass that some construction, you know, construction company or contractor can purchase or do whatever? If they're going to be there for.
Irene raised a similar point about home health aids.
Right.
So that's something we should come back to.
Yeah, so for the residential permit section where you have to have a resident permit to park anytime there, between the hours of nine and six, I think it is. There will be, like if you're in construction, you're going to service a house, you can call Villatoll and they'll have a pass for you for those streets, but we haven't really discussed Main Street. So that's a really good point for weekends is, weekend. I guess it could happen anytime.
Because it really can happen anytime and even emergencies times, even for like an oil company or gas, whatever. Somebody that just called out on a holiday or something. And it comes out to be for, you know, a flood or something, serve for, you know, guys, you're stuck there for, you know, hours and times.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we'll consider that. That's a really good point.
Eliza, can you, can you talk a little bit about how the buffer zones around sidewalks in some locations will include loading zone? Good night, legislator.
Bye.
On trails, bye.
See ya.
Bye. The loading zone thing, we decided not to do because that has to be either only loading zone or that we did not touch. But in fact, with the officer in charge, basically our crosswalks are going to be 20 feet buffers. So if you are.
Only on the approach side.
Um, yeah, but on Main Street, it's both directions, so it'll be.
Right, but I mean, you're, when you're approaching here, if you're coming up Main Street, your buffer zone, they have, but you also have, I see what you're saying, because the other one's over here on this side.
Yeah, so we're trying to improve the sightlines and make this crosswalk safe because it's never really been paved. But that just means that there is going to be these areas that are, there's no parking there and we're adding back 15-minute parking spots on corners. So those are kind of, kind of double function for commercial vehicles where they come in and unload. And that might be an area where, like, we can talk with the officer in charge and see if that's something that will help with construction. But again, I'm hearing your comment and it's a good one.
And also the, the reintroduction of the 15-minute spaces is to try to accommodate a lot of the feedback that was given last year when the committee put this forward was residents wanting to access Main Street on the weekends, which is really, really hard. So putting back those more 15-minute spots to make pickup and drop off easier.
My mother says, tries to drop the bill or something off here to the village office and there's never a spot for her to park, you know, whatever stuff. That's why she.
Village business, but, yes.
That's right.
Mayor's spot, everybody can park in it.
Walk, smear walk.
That's what I said.
Most of the time.
Everybody will be all parked.
Do this road seven Marion Avenue. Last year when we had the presentation on the parking zones, I sent a note to the parking committee about Marion and Campbell and I don't, I never heard back, so I don't know if you guys are addressing those issues.
I think I'm the blue, right?
Yeah, they're in there for the next stage. So can you?
Well, on Campbell, masses of people walk up and down Campbell in the summer. And I had suggested some sort of, because you have parking down there, signs that just say, I think I had some suggestions that, you know, cars moving in and out, watch for pedestrians or, or something to the effect of traffic calming. Because if there's going to be a lot more people driving down there to park, they're not going to be as aware of these people walking down the middle of the street. Which they do all the time.
Yes, it's true. So another portion of this, this is a piece of a bigger consideration and Trusty Bozy is looking at complete street and sort of doing a walking safety evaluation so that we can have a sense of where those trouble spots are and begin planning in logical ways toward pedestrian, it's the word that I want to say, privileging pedestrian, safe pedestrian access. That's part of a larger state program. Do you want to?
I'll just say, the idea is for it to be really community-led out there with an app kind of walking up and down the street noting sidewalk quality and signs and on a residential street. And our hope is that once we have kind of the plan set out, that we'd invite member, community members to do it, especially on their own streets because you really know it. And then we'll pull all that data together and figure out what are some of the low-hanging fruit that we could do? What are maybe the ones that are on a wish list that we need a grant for?
Campbell High on.
Yeah, no. When we, when we're out there.
We will need that.
Doing the work.
And that will, that also will feed into, we're working, we have a village engineer now and we're working on a road survey so that we can prioritize the capital projects that need to get hit. Yes, we've acknowledged the crater on Benedict that has been filled with cold patch for the moment until we get to spring. Any other villagers in the audience? Okay, so we'll, we'll shift to villagers who are joining us online. I'll turn it over to the clerk to call out.
Maggie Gordon here?
Yes, hey Jeff, it's actually Kathy. Sorry, my daughter used my Zoom. I, I just want to ask you guys, can you talk a little bit about thinking behind adding Fair Street to this parking? Given the horror show that it is on Sundays and the conditions of the sidewalk and the actual road itself?
Yeah, so Fair Street was something that we looked at because it does go one way on Sundays, so it's something that already exists as, as a parking area. And it was really brought in under consideration because we lost about 20 parking spaces on Main Street when we made our safety buffers at the crosswalks. So that's a huge chunk of revenue and a lot of parking places that we were looking to recoup. And so turning Fair Street one way on Saturdays, which it is, I think, Saturday evenings anyway. It would just add a little bit more parking availability on the weekends when it's so congested. And I think that, you know, we have heard concerns from Fair Street's residents about how difficult it is to pull out of driveways and we would make sure that there are sort of buffers at the driveways so that people don't get blocked in.
And so it's less chaotic than it is now.
Right.
Yeah, because I was going to say, like, I invite you all to come and sit at my porch. I'm on five Fair Street. I know most of you. You need to observe what goes on on a Sunday on Fair Street. It's very concerning to me that you want to add this into your parking plan and I'm not the only resident that feels that way.
Is your concern primarily around access to driveway or is there a suite of?
It's a, it's a suite of issues and, and I'm happy to come in and see you guys and talk to you more about it, like however I can participate, but it's getting into and out of our driveways. It is the condition of the sidewalks. It is the condition of the roadway. To me too, it's one of the only streets in the village in addition to Main and 9D where you can have too many traffic. So if you need a flow for people to get out or in for some reason, there's an unbelievable amount of foot traffic going out to the trails. It is a dangerous street. We have bike traffic. We have kids running all up and down the street all the time. So just to add now the burden of traffic and parking on the weekends is going to make it a much worse situation for the residents on, on Fair Street who already get a lot of the problems from the tourism that we see today. You know, and when we moved into the village, the reason that we had the parking on Saturday evenings and on Sunday and it was only supposed to be till one or two is because of the church and to accommodate the church. It was never meant to be anything other than allowing people who are going to the church to be able to park there.
That's right. That's, that's where that began. And I think we were looking at it as a, a sort of an existing habit because it would, folks would park there for the Sunday mass and stay parked. So effectively it became one way on Sundays. And so we were trying to look at opportunities that already exist where there is already a, a pattern of behavior for parking and Fair Street is one of them. We're not making a final decision tonight. That's what we're proposing for right now and I would love to, I would love to have continued conversations. The, we have to, the issue with the sidewalks, Jen's work and the, and the, sorry, the tree committee are looking at a, a porous, not a porous, it's a permeable, thank you, a permeable surface to go over tree roots for sidewalk repairs where there are, we, we don't want to lose the, the trees, but we need a smoother surface. And I'm, and I'm hoping that they're going to have a proposal ready as we go into budget season in February to, to start using that technology where we are trying to extend the life of the trees. Obviously those, the giant trees that are on your street were not intended to be crushed between a sidewalk and a street. The end of Fair Street, you all, I think, saw at nine in the other direction going toward the church, a longstanding sewer line and water line repair be addressed.
Correct.
Last year. That pattern of damage along Fair Street continues to the end to Main Street of those, those divots approximately where the sewer lines are, the connections to houses. One of the things that, that we're looking at with the engineer as part of the road survey, survey is scoping those lines. Likewise on Mountain Avenue, I'm sorry, Fish Gill, where we have the same kind of pitting where you see, where we know sewer lines are, to scope those and see what repairs need to happen there. That's going to be a partnership on the end of Fair Street. Because under, under village code, the repair of those of, of lines from the mains to houses are the responsibility of the property owner. So some of the things that need to be addressed on Fair Street, we need, we need partnership with all of you in, in those blocks to get the work done.
Yeah, and we're happy to do that. I mean, I, I can think of at least three or four neighbors who have concerns about the, the parking. And I, I'll volunteer myself too, to work in partnership with you guys to figure out what the right thing here is. You know, and one, I just wanted to make a comment about what you said about habit. So it was, it was only a, a habit that nobody ever got to have a say on. So I, I almost think it's not a fair thing to say that it, it's a habit because it's a habit. We, we should keep it and keep looking at it. So for whatever that's worth.
So that's why we're having this conversation for sure, so that we can keep refining, but also to make Fair Street, to change the one-hour times on Fair Street, it's a code change that has to go through public hearings. So again, this is not the last time we'll have this conversation. And other people might have better ideas in the audience. This configuration of the board is very open. We don't think we have all the answers. We don't think we have the best answers. So if there are folks who have other ideas, we're open to them. Can I ask someone, I don't, I did not bring a phone. Can I ask someone to keep track of time? We do have a, a three-minute, Kathy, thank you so much. We do have a, so we can make sure we get everybody in, a three-minute time limit and I don't have anything to track with. JSC, are you a villager?
Yes, sorry, this is Jesse St. Charles. I'm at 13 Fair. Yes, thank you so much for the, for the details here. One thing that jumped out at me, just in terms of how we evaluate the effects and kind of retrospect on how the plan has gone in the first stage is, do we have access to data from the meter service in order to kind of like look at saturation on different parts and different, different zones?
Yep, it's going to be a really valuable tool.
Great. Yeah.
And actually, that's where you have an area of expertise, right, Jesse?
Yes, that is.
So we're tapping you right in this moment.
All right, happy to, happy to do that. And if I, as a, as a Fair Street, as a, another Fair Street resident, anything I can do to help facilitate a discussion about the street, I'm happy to do so.
Sounds like a, sounds like a block meeting would be a good idea. I think Eliza and I would be happy to come, well, I'm speaking for Eliza. I know I would be happy to come and sit in the living room and have conversations and then bring, bring ideas that we come up with back to public session.
Sure.
All set, Jesse?
Yep, thank you.
We just changed the screen so we can see who else has hands raised.
Anybody else from the village first?
Is that everybody, Jeff? Anyone from outside the village who'd like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay. Anything further from the board on the parking topic?
Hang on to that, the question, so when you spoke with DOT about metering, it was for, it was 301, or did you also ask them about 9D?
I didn't ask specifically about 9D in this conversation because I was thinking about how how folks have been parking up.
Yeah.
Presumably the same applies. But we can follow up as a follow-up question.
It just seems like that there's a lot of.
It's going to ask to.
For revenue, if we're looking at upper 9D and then, you know, both sides of 301 and we know that people park.
Someone, someone raised that the fact that folks have been parking all the way out past Butterfield and the, on the busiest weekends.
Yeah.
Because you're in the restaurant.
No, I thought it was pretty late.
Yes, that's over by where I live.
Right.
And, and particularly, I mean, I'm sure you've seen.
Yeah, and again, the, the weekend, forgive me, the weekend tourism or like the swells for events. You know, that's, that's life. I, I don't know, you know, that's kind of how it rolls a little bit, but again, the, the issue of coming out from Paulding to turn left or right onto 9D and they're all parked, right, where they're legally parked, but then you have to inch out further to just be able to clear a SUV, right? So there's a lot of issues that again, until they all happen and unless we're going to walk around with GoPros and film everything for everybody and hand it in, you know, coming in to report it means nothing. You have to see it.
Yeah, we, we are all, we're all.
Living it.
We're all still living it.
Yeah, but those, you know, just wondering, so I mean, because this part of Main Street is, is ours and we can add those buffer zones, we would need permission from DOT to add buffer zones or have any?
Yeah, any control over, we have to ask for permits.
Yeah.
First, for making any.
But maybe that, patients like that. Potentially find out about extending the buffer zone while also doing.
My question, I'm sorry, I should have asked before.
Name an address.
I, I do not live in the village. I am full-time resident. Amber Stickel, 42 Highview. Amber Stickel, forty two Highview in Cold Spring. My curiosity is two things, A enforcement, you know, because we all know that a plan is only as good as those who can enforce a plan. So I I assume there's been intense conversations with, you know, the Cold Spring Police Department, but is the enforcement plan, but also what conversations have happened with the school neighboring businesses? Because we see a lot of overflow parking. You know, I can speak like when we go to a football game on a Saturday, half the parking is taken up by tourists. By metering Main Street and metering all these streets, you're just gonna push more and more parking to that school property. So have there been conversations about that management process with the school board? And what is that? And so that's all been been considered because I just, you know, look at now all of a sudden all the people who are and then as a flip side, what conversations have happened with the county to increase the availability of or the reliability of the trolley and of the public transportation resources for the side of the county? Because let's be realistic, there aren't any.
There are none. So there are none. And in fact, the current well, let's take take things one at a time. First, on the question of Halane, the previous iteration of the board and the parking committee did have conversation with Halane about the possibility of sharing the lot. This shirt at the softball field to meter it on Saturdays and Halane was not at all in favor of that because of resident use. We haven't completed that conversation, but have bounced ideas around with Dr. Bonante, not with the school board yet.
And not just that lot, the main lot too. I mean, we're seeing cars park. Or I, you know, as a as a as a parent.
You mean while you're there watching?
We're seeing we're seeing tourist cars park in the on the campus on a very regular basis, which leaves no parking for.
So, okay, so a couple of things. Sometimes the school makes an agreement with an event host to share parking. So that's the school making the choice. I would say I'm happy to carry that concern forward in conversations with Dr. Bonante, but the village doesn't have any control of that property. So for the school to restrict parking and signage, the school needs to.
I guess it's more, I understand that that you guys can't restrict it, but I guess it's more making them aware so that they're going to understand that that push is coming. So it's just kind of having those preempted conversations.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Get them that heads up so that they can also formulate a plan. And the reality of it is that they're gonna tap into some of the same enforcement resources that you're tapping into. So they and then again, like, what is the tax? Not, you know, like, what is that gonna be? The physical tax is gonna be on the enforcement aspect of this because again, we can make as many plans in the in the in the world, but we know people are gonna get creative with parking. We see it all the time. And if there's no enforcement behind it.
Sure.
Or limited enforcement behind it, that.
So we're coming into budget season, and one of the things that we're gonna look at in the budget season is additional enforcement officers. We had we have had for the last couple of summers, super effective folks who came out of the cadet program, Sheriff's Department, who did nothing but parking. All they did was walk around all day and do and do tickets.
And to your point, I think that this will not work at all if we don't have increased parking enforcement. So you know, the board is definitely to be considering and looking to budget you know, parking enforcement officers anytime we have metering going on especially.
Great. And then has there been any conversations with the county about increased public?
Oh, I was getting back to that, sorry. Yeah. So the way that the county bus system is currently funded is a federal grant that I'm trying to think of. I'm thinking particularly about handicap. The 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 system the system primarily serves Patterson, Carmel, for a portion of Southeast. And the funding, I'm not going to be able to answer the question well. It is all centered around that 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 hub, that transportation hub. In order for us to in order for the county to expand over here, the the way they fund that program, and I'm not being terribly I'm not being terribly articulate right now, but they need to restructure the funding of the public transportation model so that they can come in this direction. And we certainly have been trying to encourage that and will certainly continue to encourage it. It's particularly frustrating for people who are who need accessible transportation. So right now, to get accessible transportation from the county, you have to live within a quarter mile of a stop. Well, all the stops are over there. So you're you're bum out of luck over here. I mean, you can you can prearrange rides with the planning department, et cetera. But it's a hassle for people who need that transportation. It's not regular at all. I am hopeful the position of Planning Commissioner has been advertised, which was not done previously. And the folks who've been appointed to that position have not had any skill set in the area of planning. I am hopeful that with by casting abroad, the county new county executive casting a broader net and looking for expertise, that we get some folks in the trans in the planning department who actually have planning experience and knowledge and actual transportation experience that we're lacking in. And what we have now is it's subbed out to a contractor. It's not, you know, it's it's public transportation with a twist.
Well, and then the trolley is
The trolley.
We've been trying to work with that for years and have not had great success or communication.
I would feel like all of these like tourist sites now, and as I'm putting on my other hat, you know, my basketball hat is like all of these tourism sites are now all looking at transportation services and trolley services when the reality of it is is that there is an infrastructure in place that we should all be able to tap into. And so I just think like to help utilize those strengths, like the Fjord Trail, us, you know, all that stuff to help that process might not to give a little leverage too. I mean, because.
Well, one of the reasons the trolley has failed is that it was introduced with no planning around it. There are no stops. Right? There's no schedule published. The the last schedule is from two thousand nineteen. We repeatedly asked to have schedule and stops identified on the county transportation website or something we could share on our own website. Nothing comes. And the 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 way you're supposed to get on the trolley is to flag it down. Could there be anything more dangerous than asking pedestrians to flag down? So I would say, help us in advocacy, please. We in we really need and and I think you're a boss down now, right? In partnership to try to advocate for better.
To have a table discussion with Putnam County's transportation, you know,
and all the tourist sites.
Tourist sites who have their own shuttles going. If your trail who's also looking at having a shuttle that's gonna be coming probably or possibly through the village every ten minutes to fifteen minutes. So that's a lot of vehicles coming through the village. It would be great if it was all condensed into a system that actually works.
And streamline the process for everyone. It would just make so much sense.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what we there are folks from the Fjord Trail on tonight. I don't I don't know what the funding for something like that looks like with multiple entities, but it does seem smart. I have a lot of concern about multiple trolleys going or or shuttles going to down our Main Street to the train station and back out again. Traffic is slow moving on the weekends. It's a lot of emissions. Fjord Trail at least is looking at electric. But, you know, maybe picking people up at the trains at the train station isn't the best option. And keeping trolleys and shuttles off Main Street is a better option. You know, and have the stops have the stops be along ninety. You know, there I think there we have to look at possibilities that aren't sending big vehicles for which we are not sized down Main Street.
Yeah, I think a joint roundtable conversation would really benefit not only the village, but all of the neighboring organizations.
Also, it's inefficient time wise. Running the shuttle doesn't make any sense.
One is like business employees, the restaurants and all this stuff, like where do these people park?
So the Parking Committee addressed that by planning to have sort of designated free parking for employees of Main Street over by the Marathon Field. So on Campbell, there's there's parking areas and designating those for employees.
And one of the things that was much talked about by the Parking Committee is the fact that we all have to shift our expectations about being able to park right in front of a building. You're just not gonna be able to do that ever on a Saturday. Sometimes you're not gonna be able to do it during the week.
Certainly, you know, somebody goes to work, whatever, you know, as much as you get close to park for an entire day. Come back, you know, and then, you know, go to work and then it's worth being going to work for and not making it, you know.
Well, I guess it's hard for me to imagine the thought process that would go through someone's head to say, I'm gonna park on Main Street. I'm gonna get the space on Main Street to do my job all day, right? So what I'm saying is there isn't a lot of parking on Main Street anyway. And if if commercial entities and businesses, no, but you we so so this area we've talked about over on on Campbell being being designated as as worker parking. If 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 commercial entities want traffic to keep moving, it's key to get parking to keep turning over. They can't have their employees sitting in it all day either. So we've all got to give a little something for a larger return. And it might be that you're walking from Campbell Avenue, or not Constitution, but the Boulevard to Main Street, just like when you're in a city, you don't expect that you're gonna park right in front of a building, right? You know, you're gonna have to walk and you're gonna optimize where you walk, where you park price with.
There's also free parking in Metro North all weekend long. So that there will be plenty of parking for employees there and it's, you know, it's not a hard walk.
Just the other question I was on, you were talking about ninety and three oh one with DOT. I don't know if something's changed over the years. I've always known is that basically from High Street down is village only.
The light.
The light.
We're one hundred percent on that again? Yeah, okay. Because it was always that was where DOT transferred, you know, whatever. It's always from High Street down and from High Street up was state DOT. That was always the way it was when we always called for anything for the fire department or emergency or whatever. So on the that was.
We'll certainly confirm, but that's that's my conversation with the DOT.
I know they always say it's the light, but that's what they like county guy. Years ago, they used to start, you know, and even on Main Street, you know, like about a fair street, they don't start here. You know, they always should start right at first.
Talking about plows.
Correct. But I'm just I'm saying, but the but they're responsible. That was parking and everything on, you know. So that's why somebody mentioned one time where the meter or the time parking on Main Street was at. And it was always, well, it didn't matter if you were above Fair above High Street, there was no time limit on the parking years back. Where there was always hours on Main Street coming down. You know, wherever it was.
That's I mean, that's why we're reassessing the way it's been, right?
So I'm deciding to say, so like what I'm saying, you're looking asking for ninety or three oh one, but they so right now is that like?
So confirm that block.
Part of the area because that was never like cops are always always used to tell like the restaurant people to park up at the traffic light above High Street because we can't. You're not monitored. You're not basically within the hours. So it's a safe area.
I think that things have changed in the Cold Spring Police Department as well. There are other folks who have their hands raised.
I'm just saying, so that's I'm just clarifying that when you ask for ninety three oh one, is that part of it also where you have to do?
Thank you. I see Patty Tomato's hand is raised.
Hi, Patty Tomato, thirteen Stone Street. I have several concerns talking about enforcement and policing. I'm wondering what the fines are going to be? Because by the looks of many of the cars that come here, these people can afford to just leave their cars there for long periods of time. So I'm wondering what the fine is going to be?
We're not changing the fine structure as it is. I think I don't.
Driven by state.
Yeah, I would have to check that. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I think it's, you know, forty five or fifty dollars. So it isn't a huge amount, but if you know, you went into a lot and you had to pay for parking for the day, that ticket would be probably a similar amount.
Jeff, is that is that correct that the VNT the VNT limits are established?
Well, I'm Texas to narrow code, so there are limits. We'd have to consult with.
We can only we can only go as high as the state allows us to go. But I think I I hear you. I hear you, Patty, and it's like you can see how it's approached as a cost of doing business. So are we are we setting the the levels high enough for tickets? Good question.
Right, because if you're looking for a turnover, I don't know that you're going to get it.
Well, and then that also gets to the frequency of of ticketing, right? Like if you if you come to Cold Spring a couple of times and you park and you don't and you get away with it, then you do it again. But if you first time you come and you get a ticket, then you know, all right, they take it seriously here. I'll follow the rules. And so we can create
Okay, the other thing is in in terms of encouraging people to use mass transit, they're using it. If you've ever been on the platform on a fall afternoon, I did it this year and I picked somebody up coming from New York City. We had to take the elevator, go across and then walk southbound to get to the parking lot. I felt positively unsafe. There were hundreds of people there with their bikes, with their friends, and we had to keep saying, excuse us, excuse us. So I really think the people coming from Manhattan are using mass transit. The cars that are going around are from Connecticut and New Jersey, and they don't have a way of getting here. And I think when the fjord comes in whatever capacity that will be, which does now frighten me, which it didn't in the beginning. I was a big supporter of it. But I think that we're going to have people who want to come here for a lovely day. But our sidewalks are only so wide. We only have so many parking spaces. And I'm really concerned that the idea of mass transit, the idea of the shuttles. I answered the survey and I said, since COVID, I don't relish the thought of being on a shuttle with people from lots of places. Well, it doesn't matter. We all have, you know, germs. I don't want to ride a shuttle. And I think that's going to be the case. So I think a lot of this has to be addressed. Someone put something on Facebook that the situation on the weekends is untenable. And that's a really good word choice because I don't think we can support it. And my fear now, I choose not to go to the shops on Main Street on the weekends as much as I can. I I love to be able to go. But I choose not to go and I'll go during the week. But once the fjord comes, I don't know that I'm going to be able to go during the week. So I think there are a number of issues that we will be talking, and I know you're receptive. You know, the situation on Railroad Avenue has improved thanks to your efforts with the large trucks there. But I do think there are many, many issues of concern.
So what the comment that you just made has been reflected back to me in other ways by business owners on Main Street who don't necessarily market their wares to to tourists. I mean, particularly art shop, the flower the flower shop. And say, you know, I lose my I lose my local audience on the weekend. I think it's also worth pointing out that when we're describing these situations, we are describing a season. Although there are more and more people in the winter than there used to be, the intensity, the intensity is is definitely the fall, but we can't just think of it as as a fall issue anymore. Monday was packed.
People were parked all the way up to the way. There was not a parking spot this weekend and it's January, like as a shopkeeper, January is usually dead. And and we're busy now. So so this whole system that we're putting into place is our first step towards an effort that will start to pull it back a little bit. It's gonna be, you know, again, a little bit uncomfortable and change is always hard. But the goal is that we're gonna start to make it maybe a little bit less convenient to park and drive in Cold Spring for visitors so that people maybe go somewhere else for the days or weekends. And or just like remember like, oh, you know, driving to Cold Spring isn't that fun. You know, cars are a convenience thing. Our whole culture has embraced. But if they're not convenient and if it becomes more of a problem for your fun day trip to be coming by car, maybe you won't do that. So that's part of what this system is trying to do and we'll see the results. It's it's very hard to like shake the crystal ball and know what's gonna happen. But this is an effort to try and, you know, address those concerns before it gets worse because we know it's only gonna get it's only gonna get worse.
That's what I'm afraid of, that, you know, we're just building towards that. And I'm very, very concerned about our future. That's what I'm afraid of, that, you know, we're just building towards that and um, I'm very, very concerned about our future.
Um, we'll, we'll talk more about this um, later, but I want to encourage Patty and others to attend um. An open house at the Firehouse on February second from six to eight PM, that's being sponsored by the Fjord Trail. It's really important that your trail planners hear your concerns, um, it is particularly focused around issues of parking and shuttle. Within the village, um, and they're encouraging village residents to come. Um, so that's that, that what you've just said Patricia needs to be said, not just to us, we hear you, we know. But but your trail folks need to understand too that. Um, we are a residential community, that we want to maintain our residential quality of life, um, and. That uh, it's very important to protect, to protect that quality for the people who live here, we don't want to just live in a destination, and it's in a tourist destination. Um, I see Karen Jackson is her hand raised.
Hi, maybe I missed it, um, the metering and all the permits, is that just for the residents for the weekend issues? Or like if I go out on Main Street and I have to walk a dog on Stone Street, let's say during the week, I can't park there during the week?
So.
If there's a spot?
Right, as. As the parking committee proposed, and we're pretty much sticking to what they recommended, um, because they spent a lot of time. Making that plan and they were as good as anyone else could be, um, and they thought about a lot of the details. Um, they have proposed that the resident side street um, permit parking areas. Be all week long from nine, from, they proposed from ten to five, I believe, we're, we're gonna extend it to from nine to six. But um. They, they left little buffer areas, so by law, to put in a resident parking area, like. Region, district, you have to leave at least twenty percent of the parking open to the public, available to the public. So um, there will be, you know, anywhere from six to one. But somewhere in between mostly, at the corner of Main Street and those side streets, there will be free parking available there. That will be signed, there'll be signage letting you know where you can park and where the residential permit parking begins. Uh, so that will be available on weekdays, Main Street will not be metered, so it'll be the same as it is now. Um, I know that even on weekdays, sometimes it's hard to find parking spots, so.
Yeah, it's impossible.
Yeah, so there will be Main Street and then there'll be these around the corner spots and then, um. I think it's, is it Northern Avenue?
Hmm.
All of Northern Avenue will be also provided free parking, so it's a block away from Main Street, but not a bad walk. Um, so that'll also always be available to the public.
Anyone else? On this topic? Okay.
Barbara?
Yes, thank you, um, I'm on uh, West Belvedere. And I see that's in that uh, blue zone, which if I had it correctly is something that's gonna be evaluated after the initial. Um, implementation of the parking. Um, and my comment is that. Uh, when you implement this and parking spills over onto the other streets. We tend on West Belvedere and on Grandview Terrace to have people park on both sides of the street. During peak tourist times, to the point where. There is no way an emergency vehicle could get down these streets of any size, when they're parked on both sides of the street. Uh, people do park on the village buffer on on the lawn, which is fine, but it's the ones that don't. And park right on the edge of the pavement that end up with a very narrow path between cars parked on both sides. So there are several of us that amongst ourselves have said, you know, it would be nice if on our side streets. People could park on one side of the street, I, and it can be the side in front of my house, it's not about not having. People in park in front of my house, that's fine, but they really shouldn't park on both sides of the street. Because there's no way you could ever get a fire truck or a large emergency equipment here. When though, when they park on both sides and.
Sorry.
That, and that's a real problem, there, there, you know, been, some elderly people have moved out, but there is a need for emergency equipment. On this cul-de-sac area, you know, the the little horseshoe. Um, and it does get congested and people do park on both sides regularly, I mean. There's a whole host of things that they do that may or may not be desirable, but the one that I think is really harmful is not being able to have the equipment get in here.
Yes, first of all, if you're, if you in real time are seeing. Narrowed areas where you're concerned about emergency vehicles being able to get through, please call the Cold Spring Police to come assess and have a look, and if. Vehicles need to be towed to make sure we can get an emergency vehicle through, that's what needs to happen, so. You know, don't wait on that one, if you see it happening live, you're actually, your neighborhood is. The thing that sparked us thinking about. How we should be thinking into the future, last, last fall. Um, and last summer were were really dense in your neighborhood, you know, seeing it going all the way around Grandview was. Something, um, and I know uncomfortable for everybody down there, that's why we are looking at those blue areas to say. This is where we need to go next, and that's why, I don't know if you were on the call earlier when I explained that. Um, we have the enabling legislation from New York State to implement the orange portion right now. We are actively working with Senator Rollison and Assembly Member Levy. Uh, Levenburg, excuse me, Levenburg to um. Pass enabling legislation that will allow us to expand the residential parking areas, including in your neighborhood, so that is, that is in the works.
But I I also will mention that that's a really brilliant suggestion, making no parking on one side and providing signage is something that. We can implement sooner than later, um, as a quick fix before we get to being able to put, you know, resident. Protected parking on those streets, so thank you for that suggestion, that's really helpful.
That's, yeah, that's something that would go, would go for through in the one twenty six revisions. Um, there are, there are a number of streets where that probably um. Needs to be looked at, but we also have to be mindful of is not, you know, on on Grandview. We may have that capacity, we also should be mindful of not losing all of our, the rest, there are residents who need to park on the street, so we need to carefully balance the numbers. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I will say most of the residents here, uh, I don't, there is no house on Grandview or. That does not have a driveway and a room for at least two or three cars, but.
Village have more, definitely have more driveway capacity for sure.
But I just, it's, I will keep that in mind about calling if it looks out of hand, because it has gotten out of hand in the past, you know, with uh. The amount of tourist parking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now have we hit everyone who wants to comment?
Please so.
Okay. Um, so we'll move us, the trustees are, feel that we've hit what we needed to hit, um. I wanted to to open conversation about um. Ticketed events. Um. We haven't had a ton of ticketed events in the village, but we have the capacity to have them at Mayor's Park. Um, and at, well, so long as, so long as the village is managing Dockside, so at least until twenty twenty eight. Um, at at Dockside, um. I wanted to talk through, you, Eliza has has sort of eloquently described. Um, the village is a sink, and that there are multiple false faucets in the sink, and there are some that we can turn and some that we can't. Um, to control numbers, um, and this is, ticketed events are one of the areas where we we can. Control the faucet, um.
At least in public parks.
At least in public parks, um, not on private property. So there were two ticketed. Events last year, um. They were very car heavy, um, how the Halley parking lot was used as you, as you pointed out. Um. Another element in this, in this consideration of do we, where do we hold ticketed, continue to hold ticketed events and where, right, we brought in about, there's about ten thousand dollars. Worth of revenue, um. The event hosts were built back for policing, they were built back for um, the event coordinator services during the event. Um. So in that way, um, the event paid for itself for the day of, um, but there are, there, there's a lot of. Staff time drawn um, into preparation for events, I think that needs to be thought about too, and asking the question of, are we. Are we an event, are we operating event venues, and if we are, how? Um. The. Field at Mayor's Park. Um, has just had, we've entered an intermunicipal agreement with Halane, um, is a major taxpayer investment at Mayor's Park. On nearly fifty thousand dollars um, for the improvement of the ball field, and that's one of the areas that has been used in the past for ticketed events. Um, and so. I think we all have concerns about protecting that taxpayer investment, um, it's all, it's coming out of all of our pockets, um, in the end. So, you know, is Mayor's Park a place to have ticketed events? Is Dockside the place to have ticketed events where we're, where the park is closer to the Metro North's lot for weekend parking? Um, and the guidelines. Our agreement with the state allows limited vendor parking on the site itself on the day of, as opposed to Mayor's Park, but we have to. Try to accommodate vendors in our highway lot, um. Which this year was tough because of equipment that we had stored there, so there are a lot, there are lots of different factors, and I'm just sort of throwing it out for a discussion of. Ticketed events, is this something we want to continue to do? Um. How do we want to manage them? Where do we want to have them? What do we, what feels like, what feels like something, what feels like a manageable? Um, what feels like a manageable approach to ticketed events within the context of our residential village?
I mean. I have pause, you know, like, like on this, because um, we're talking about not wanting to be a destination. Um, only village and here events that are making us a destination, people come in for these events. And then they, they head back out, um, and it puts us on the map for festival goers. Um, the other thing that I think we should be considering is like, the revenue is so small, it's, it's like ten thousand dollars. Really. It it doesn't help provide. The kind of infrastructure we need to like repair the sidewalks and roads that get the heavy traffic from people coming to the events.
Yeah, if it's a very, they're very hard, car heavy events.
They're car heavy events, they're foot heavy events, um, and and they're just not bringing the revenue, I mean. And and we get tons of complaints from residents on on these events. Um, you know, just having crowds coming by their houses, um, which, you know, that may happen. Whether there's events not, but um, the events don't help. Uh, you know, people complain about C Street as well and don't like having it in their view, but it's double the revenue or more, actually. So, um.
Also, we've, we've put up, we've put limits on. C Street, and this isn't an either or conversation, I'm throwing, I'm throwing it out as a, as a question. We, we have, that's one of the places where we're, where we have levers to pull, we have, we reduced the capacity on the boats, we've reduced. The number of days, um, et cetera, the number of dockings per day to others.
Um, my thought of, based on what Eliza said is. Yes, they come for the day and they get in their cars and they go, but then they see the village. And they come back and they shop where they eat. And they buy homes, I mean, half of the people who live here came here one time or something. And came back later, so I don't think we want to shut the door. On on events necessarily, I I don't think Mayor's Park is our best option anymore. I think maybe putting it down by the river would be better, keeps them closer to the trains, keeps them in a larger area and keeps our field. Preserved. Maybe we also want to think about raising fees, if we're going to be taxed. You know, and have to repair things, then we have to reevaluate what we charge to use these facilities.
I think I brought the fee schedule in. Oh, no, the fee schedule. Um, you can pull it up online, and right now it's three thousand dollars for a ticketed event for a for-profit. Per day. For the first day, and then the additional day, can you say that again?
Do we have any idea what their? Revenue is.
That's not really our business.
No, I know.
But you're saying, you're saying that how significant is?
How significant is our cost versus their cost?
Yeah, well, it's not just cost, though, I mean, it's, it's, it's important to frame out impact. To, um, you know, we're not. We're not paying all that much, the, 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 the things that the staff are doing. To prepare for these events are part of jobs already, right, so so Bugsy would be, for example, at Mayor's Park, putting up. Hurricane fencing to protect the field, he'd be, he'd be doing outdoor work in a day anyway, it's part of his job, but it's. Time he spends on those events that he could be spending doing other things, um. So it's, it's, is it, it's not just about the dollars, it's about, it's about the impact.
I see both sides, I. Um, I mean, I do think of C Street and that we have a lot of people that have concern about it, and it's not, they're not. Um, the difference in revenue isn't massive between two of them, actually, you know, I mean, if we increased. The fee for a few days, it could be the equivalent of what we're making from C Street. And so I just think it's worth like evaluating them, thinking about if if there are a number of levers, isn't this the one or. Um, or is there a way that we balance? Um, that we balance the two of them. Um, another thing we, you know, we could consider is, um. Is there a way to have the events at a time when the village is less busy? I know that's not a time, you know, that's, that's at times when maybe you're not as likely to have an outdoor event, but like.
Um, well, that's framed out a little bit by our intermunicipal agreement, right, which says, no, at least in Mayor's Park. Um, no. Ticketed events during the time when the fields are used by Haline, so that cuts out the spring and the fall and drops you into summer. Yeah, but if if Mayor's Park comes off the table, we don't have that kind of restriction around athletic schedule.
But maybe having, you know, there's one in the fall, right, maybe that's not a time that we want to have a ticketed event because we're already. At max, but in early June. You know, we see that there's a space for having a ticketed event, so I I guess I'm, I'm saying, like, I think that it's worth talking through this and thinking, thinking through it from all sides and not in a. A yes or no.
Yeah.
Um.
Look, that's the point of raising it, um, because we are, we are farther out, right, we're in January, we have a bit of, we have a bit of time to think, we are beginning to get. The applications, the same, basically the same event. Um, organizers that we get applications for every year, so it's not, there's not a run on requests for the parks, um. So if we were, we do have Jeff. We do have Jeff Amato on, the Chair of the Recreation Commission. Jeff, are there thoughts that you want to share at this stage? I know that you, you share some of the concerns about field preservation.
Yeah, thank you, um, yeah, I, I'm, uh. I, I, I think I agree with um, with Mayor Foley. And our, our main concern is for um, village residents and town residents to use the fields. And to, um. Uh, you know, to to be in the, our parks more, uh, to use our parks more. And obviously, uh, these ticketed events, um, they, while village residents and town residents could. Participate in them, it's primarily what we're seeing is it's out of town residents using. These uh, using our parks during these events, so, um, but I do agree with, um, with, with what Catherine. And Laura did say that, um, there is a potential for revenue. And uh. And so, um, I think it's, it's important for, uh, for the board to to weigh. Uh, the impacts of these ticketed events. Uh, versus something, and another revenue stream like C Street, uh, or other, or other revenue generators. Um, because I know there's been issues with with some residents not being able to use parks. During these events, but it is limited on, you know, certain days, uh, there were three days last year in all. And, um, and I, and although there, there are. Um. Heavy with people driving here, the events did make efforts to try and provide discounts for. Uh, for. Uh, participants that, um, that use mass transportation. Uh, they did provide shuttles. They did provide shuttles from, from the train station and, and Haldane. They also reserved Haldane for parking as well for, for the events. So there was an effort by the applicants because we did raise concerns with, parking in the village, with pedestrian traffics, traffic in the village. So I think that we've come a long way. Obviously, the last year or two, our fee schedule has changed significantly. So the, the previous to that, it was about a thousand dollars a, a day. And, and we were probably operating in the red because of the amount of effort that it took to coordinate and roadways and facilities and, and Cold Spring Police and, and all the coordination.
Stuff that happened in the background that you don't necessarily see or think about is the lead up to an event, you know, conversations that are time that's having to be spent by the officer in charge, by the, by the crew chief, by the clerk, by the event coordinator to get to that day. You know, it's also, it's not that we're, we're, we're not getting, people aren't banging down the doors. We have basically the same two applicants again and again and again for big events. So I can understand that there would be a concern that we not become a festival destination. We have not yet. I do think the point of how we're, how we're pricing and, and how comparable the adjustments made in with the last iteration of the Village Board and the Rec Commission did make a difference for sure in terms of, in terms of revenue. And these are, these properties are, are public assets.
I, I think too, you know, like we're, we're hearing residents saying that everything is crowded and not crowded all the time, but when it is crowded, it feels really cagey around here for people who live here. And I think that any way we can like open the space and keep it open is good. And you know, you've mentioned possibly moving it from the park, from Mayor's Park to Dockside. But Dockside is already pretty congested down with, if you give them C Street and festivals, I think they're going to lose a lot. So it is, you know, it's like we're, we're working on preserving quality of life and, and space for residential comfort and community. And I feel like festivals are something that takes away from that and it's not driving enough income to make it, you know, something worth losing.
Well, one of the, one of the quality of life impacts that we dealt with last year was, you know, the events where alcohol was, was served, right? We had complaints about running through the village, having consumed alcohol all day. So I mean, there, there, it's a, there, there are, there, there are different degrees of, of quality of life impacts. Laura raises an interesting point, I think, thinking about if we were to be a location that, if, if Dockside were to become a location that had appeal for large events, could you, could you make the amount of revenue with more limited impact rather than twenty-two days of C Street for twenty-two thousand dollars? By the time you take out expense, you know, the, the policing and the bathrooms. That's what we cleared on C Street, C Street last year was twenty-two thousand three fourteen. Those are impacts over twenty-two days as opposed to an impact of an event. Right, ten thousand dollars in three days of impact. And that's, that's not, I don't want to become, I don't want to become the home of the, of the Renaissance Fair, but your point is, your point is well taken about concentration of impact.
And I mean, as your presentation said, we have these new revenue streams coming in. And so we can also, you know, we can think about it in, in the context of having rental rentals and, and parking fees, but you know, we also don't know exactly how that's going to fall out. So it's hard to, to put on a piece of paper exactly what's going to happen. But we are, you know, that's a good thing that we're expecting other kinds of revenues coming.
So it may be a decision that doesn't, that isn't made this year, but is in our mix of as we're going forward and assessing. This is another of the, the factors to consider. Lillian Moser, who's the Events Coordinator, has her hand raised.
Good evening, everybody. One of the things that I think was a major problem with ticketed events last year was being that I was newly appointed as the Events Coordinator. It was my first year running. And I learned a lot. And one of the things that I think if we move forward with ticketed events is they have to be vetted properly. I think a lot of the problems with the ticketed events we had last year were simply that the organizer of the event really didn't have a full understanding of the rules and regulations within the village. They had that piece of paper that had everything written on it. Sometimes they didn't read it. So I think with an event coordinator now, that if the event can get properly vetted prior to any approvals, we would have a better idea if this event would be something that would be capable of being handled in the village or not handled in the village.
Which is why we made the shift and we are, I, I want to be clear that the, the Rec Commission in the past has done the initial review of events and then they come to the Board of Trustees for final approval. And we were finding that what was coming to the board was incomplete or, you know, questions that needed to be asked hadn't been asked. And that's why we revised that structure to have the Events Coordinator working on not just ticketed events, but all
Birthday parties.
Birthday parties, rentals, et cetera, to make sure that insurance was in place, et cetera. So it's, it's a fair point that ground was gained last year in terms of management and, you know, we'll, we'll see the fruits of that in the next season.
But I also think that cutting down on, I think that if the event is properly vetted in the beginning, you will cut down on certain department heads having to take time out of their schedules to deal with things that should have been discussed in the beginning. So I mean, I, I'm really looking and I would love to sit down with all of you and discuss this. Looking at having an opportunity before the application even gets into my box of being able to sit down with the organizer and say, have you gone over this? Do you understand what this means? Do you understand that you will be charged for police department? Do you understand that you have to be off the property by this time?
What are your?
Last year.
Say that again?
These were some of the problems we had last year. Some, so, some of the organizers didn't realize the park closes at nine o'clock. You have to be out of there by nine o'clock.
Well, and it, it's also important to note that not every event was the same, right? Some, some events went off without a hitch. Other events, you know, depended on the, the, the organizational level of the person putting the application forward. So it varies that way. So it sounds like, well, let, let me ask, if we were to break this into questions. First, the question of Mayor's Park as a ticketed event venue and the protection of the field. Do we have a sense that we'd like to move away from that? Excuse me.
I thought it was possible to keep people away from the, the ball field part and fence it off and then use other part, use the other part of it or is, is it?
Been done in the past. And if I could ask, is Jeff still with us? Jeff Amato, are you still here?
Yes, yes.
Jeff Laura's question? Is it possible to keep people off? Yeah, go ahead.
So yeah, so in the past, Roadways and Facilities has provided fencing around the infield area. And of the baseball field, the baseball diamond. And we've also required vehicles to stay off of the, the, basically the center of the field. With the exception of an area along Fair Street and the wastewater treatment facility. So that allows for vendors to, to drive on those areas only. Those are the drier areas of the, of the field. And we've also made a number of revisions to the agreement to not allow for events if, if the field is untenable, if it, there's rain, there's been rain in the past and, and the, the field would be damaged by an event like this. So we've, we've taken a number of, of steps, measurements to, to avoid damage to the field because it is a field first and foremost. And, and so we still, we do have safety measures that we can still have events at Mayor's Park. But Dockside is also an option too.
Outside of the, outside of the Haldane season, I mean, we, we were specific in that when we, when we signed the agreement.
Correct, yeah.
We're not the only ones that are on that. So, it's also important to note that one of the, the revenue aspects of Mayor's Park is that vendor parking is provided on or can be provided on the highway department lot. There, that was problematic last year because of the way storage sharing that was happening with the, the Metro North Railroad. The, as Lillian has pointed out, the Events Coordinator would, being in place more proactively would be able to hopefully cut some of that off at the pass to make sure that we had more spaces available.
If we were to designate Dockside as the sort of preferred place for ticketed events, vendor parking can be in Metro North.
Vendor parking can be, all parking can be in Metro North. There's, there's an available large lot there. But also the site agreement, which I shared around that both the application that are, at agreement with the state allows for permitted parking of a, a number of the authorized vehicles on the site. So vendors can park on the site and not have to be accommodated elsewhere. Vendor parking is a problem at Mayor's Park. It, it could, it, it can be a revenue source, but it's also, it can be a challenge.
The first place we should try to encourage people to do ticket events then should be Dockside.
Thoughts? I've, I've heard, I've heard your, the concern that you've raised. And again, we don't need to make a decision tonight, but I'm, I'm mindful that we do have these applications coming in and we're going to need to make decisions. So I wanted to have an initial conversation before we review the applications themselves. Does anyone from the public want to make a comment? Yeah, go ahead Irene.
Thinking of a Dockside in the summertime, the movies, right?
They're not ticketed events though.
I know they're not ticketed events, but they're big events, right? So then, I don't know if they're every two weeks or I, I don't know what the schedule is for that. And then they're postponed because of rain and everything else. But yeah, just saying like, and then if you're having that and one to two ticketed events at Dockside plus C Street, whatever that thing is called, you know, living down there, that's a lot of impact. And it's just again, it's the same problem. It's the same conversation of the same problem. So I'm, I'm just putting it out there because I thought it, I decided to say it.
I mean, I guess I, what I like about Mayor's Park is that it's, it's not tucked away at the bottom of the village, right? There's a lot easier access and there aren't people that live right. There are people that live quite nearby, but like, it's not, it's not quite as dense in that area, but I do really hear it's a, it's a wet field that really feels the impact. It's a place where we have investment. So I mean, I think there's the pluses and minuses.
Well, there's pluses and minuses of, yeah, of any location.
We're just chasing the event around the village.
Two things, like Mayor Field, or the field now, when they deserve insurance, policy required. You know, but it isn't enough to, like, the field does get destroyed.
Yeah. In fact, when we reviewed the IMA with Haldane, we had our insurance company look at it. Their insurance company look at it and recommend higher levels of, of insurance and for, for, for us and Haldane to provide and to cover each other. But also on the event side.
And the other thing is with the Dockside property, you know, like when you guys, years ago, we used to have the fire department fireworks every day. We moved it to Mayor's Field because it got larger than when we had it to work from. And because of the mass of volume of people. And like you said, you know, now it's your, your, like an hourglass, you're putting everybody down the bottom. And then when they all go to leave, it's that congestion of the, the staircase or the bridge. It's only two ways to go to get up back out of there. And it was brought to, you know, when you get over a certain volume of people at, at an event where it comes to fairs and say whatever, there's supposed to be X amount, you know, through codes or anything else, egress areas or like when you guys have it through a front, now you stop all traffic except for local. Now, if somebody has an event down there, you know, stop traffic or regular daytime traffic flow is always going to be available to go down there. So like you're going to have a volume of traffic and then masked out, you know, whatever, a thousand people over at this, you know, event. And so it's like, you know, it all congests all back to one again. It could be an issue as far as a safety issue if something happened.
Travis Close is a really good point as a benefit of, well, as a benefit from one perspective, it might, wouldn't be considered a benefit by, by folks who live in that location, but you don't have the, the dead end and turnaround issue.
Mayor's Field, you, you know, half the people could go just to evacuate, go towards nine D. As you come up to get to, you know, Northern Avenue, wherever you split, you go up to the hill, you went to the main street, like you have breakaway points where there's, you know, it's easier for the congestion to break down and be smaller volumes at a time. Where compared to below the tracks, you're stuck at the, and then, and then the only other thing, it went back to Mayor's Field was when they do have the events, especially like the beer thing. And there's like, they, they get a mug, is it a glass mug? Because technically really like, because that feels, right? So I'm saying like, I don't, I didn't, I haven't been, but everybody said you get a Stein or whatever. That's why I'm just concerned like what you're using on the field as, you know, glass or any type of whatever, if it gets broken, it's in the glass, the field, the sports players or anybody who's down there, kids playing on the field, whatever, it's, you know.
Well, first, the, they're restricted from the field area. It's, they have the restrictions from the field area itself. But yes, good point. But what was provided last year at Brews of Views, right? Your Brews of Views pops on the Hudson, whatever. Was a plastic container.
Do we have any sense of the number of events? And maybe we, first of all, if there's the movie, we could only have them in theory every other again, if, if we were going to have an event.
Right. You'd have to be planning around the own society.
Run around with your own society, but I mean, there could be an event that is the right place is Mayor's Park. And then there's an event that the right place is Dockside.
And you're assessing more case by case.
Yeah, I think, I mean, again, I still say, I mean, when we did the fireworks, so the first couple of years of the fireworks, yeah, it was a crazy madhouse, ten thousand people down there and that was, you know, there were still people walking and trying to get out. Never mind all the cars, but it's kind of, I mean, because it's down there, maybe it's different, but I don't think we get that many. We don't get ten thousand people for fireworks anymore.
So I was starting to think, well, what if it became a, a generic event application? We do, under our agreement with the state, have requirements that we have to meet, which is why when you look at the event application for Mayor's Park, it's very different than the, the Dockside application. There's much more detail required. And many more rules and regulations that, that we have to follow to keep the, our, our agreement with the state. Maybe some, some version of what we require at Dockside becomes part of a more general ticketed event application. And we knock out more of the questions that Lillian was addressing. They get knocked out earlier via a more detailed event application. I mean, there are elements of that that are repetitive. I don't think that's necessarily the perfect application. The Dockside one, it needs revision. But maybe some, some sort of hybrid.
And if it's protecting Dockside and we want to
Back to Mayor's Park.
Then adopting some of the state's budget goals would be a horrible idea.
And again, this is another one of those elements that there need to be revisions in our recreation chapter in the code to make some of these things possible. Chapter in the code to make some of these things possible, like the modifying hours, et cetera, so this isn't the last time we're gonna have this conversation, and we will have. Public. Conversation again at a public hearing when the code gets changed to accommodate what we're talking about. Um. Any other? Topics we need to hit on? I think we've, we've sort of covered Sea Streak in our discussion of. Um. Ticketed events. I would say that. I would like that conversation, hopefully we can get. Commitment. Of what they intend to do earlier, you know, they had sort of requests for an extended season that came late in the year, I'm hoping that establishing communications over the winter, we can get a sense of what they're looking at.
Yeah.
Summer.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe it's a little early to. You know. Consider the value of these events and.
Yeah.
Sea Streak. Until we have our, you know, other revenue streams up and running.
Absolutely, mm-hmm. Yeah, we, right now, we, right now, we still need them, but as, as we look at the sort of the suite of. Sources that we have and things we can manage going forward, it's, it's good to have this baseline conversation, yeah. Um, last, I just wanted to give, um, I mentioned that. Um, Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail event that's coming up, and I do encourage villagers to go, um, and also everyone. I got this in the mail today at home, we got it at Village Hall, they were sent to all. Um, village residences, if you're not able to attend the event, there's a QR code on the back that allows you to access a digital survey. Um, if you can't make it to the firehouse on November second, I encourage you to do that. I also wanted to let. Um, folks know that we did make available on our website. Um, the public documents related to the Breakneck Connector, um, the Seeker Review Parts One, Two, and Three. On our website, we did not include, there are massive amounts of, um. Appendices and uh. Figures, which we did not include on our website, I hope state gets its own document up on the website. Sooner rather than later, but we did at least make those initial portions, and I would encourage villagers to read through that, that, that relates particularly to the bridge. That connects, um, Little Stony Point, will connect Little Stony Point. To the trailhead, that first. Portion of the project, um. Sort of important insights into, um. Into review process and what we, what we can expect going forward, um. From the environmental review, um, I do, there are concerns that I have about the. The um, change of the lead agency late in the game, um, the narrative. For Part One was modified on the twenty-second of December, um. And that's, I think, the first time that we had proper notification that the lead agency had shifted from the town of. Fishkill, um, to Parks and that the negative declaration. Declared by the Town of Fishkill in two thousand sixteen would be superseded by the decision, um. Incorporated in the, the Part Three of the FEAF for this document, so I'm hoping that. Now, now we know a bit of what to expect, I'm hoping that we will see, um. Sort of greater, greater transparency on that level of process and greater clarity about. Um, our engagement with and the public's engagement with the Fjord Trail. Um, and the. The parks around this project and understanding. The roles and clarifying the role so that the public knows what they can expect and who is accountable from the not-for-profit side. Um, and the regulatory side and the park, in, in parks. Yeah.
Can we put that QR code on our website for people who may have trashed the. Thing, not realizing that they could do that?
They can, you can share out their post on social media, I imagine.
I did the survey and I'm gonna go, yeah, but you're correct, I almost tossed it, I almost.
This is also available on the Fjord Trails website and their social media.
The QR code?
Um, any comments on? From the board or from the public on that topic? Okay, so we are moving on to board business, approval of bill. And you wanted to, there were some.
I will, um, yeah, I'll make a motion to uh, to approve batch sixty-seven, sixty-seven, in the amount of. Two hundred and eleven thousand eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Nice.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
But I wanted to just raise a question that, um, maybe we could ask. Michelle, there is one electric bill in here. That all of the actual bills have, they've been presented as actually read November, December. And January, and I don't know what they actually said, but the, the previously billed amount was a hundred and nine dollars and forty-three cents, and the current electric charges are three thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and nineteen cents, which. Were an actually bad red bill that a little. Is most, don't really change much.
They actually.
Usage doesn't change much. It's a steep step, so, um, if we could just, uh.
You do, Jeff, would you like to hold back? Paying this one until you have our question from Michelle? Is that what you're proposing?
If that's the best way to do it, or if we could just continue, you know, um, after Michelle's reviewed it, I'm, I'm a view of Michelle, I'd approve it.
So how would that functionally work from a process standpoint if we were to hold out?
We would really have to redo the whole batch, so, the recommendation is do not. Do that.
But have her follow up, pay it, have her follow up and then report back.
Yes.
Okay.
It's one thing we would essentially.
That's a.
Yeah, it's a bit, it's a weird. I said, if, with electric bill like that came to my house, I'd do it, oh my god.
Well, I mean, I think that's happening in everyone's houses, which is why we're having the conversation about. The CDA, yeah. That was the only issue, so we need a motion on the batch number and the amount, and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Uh, I think we've exhausted public. Uh, I would make a motion.
Oh, oh, Michael, yes.
Hey there, Mike Turton with the Highlands Current, just a couple, I guess. Um. Questions from a, a couple miles above the village, um, has there ever been? An economic impact study done for how tourism? Benefits Phillips Town and Cold Spring?
New York State. New York State does an annual report on tourism, and I believe you can drill down. To county level, I know you can drill down to county level, I don't know beyond that. You can, uh. I'm trying to remember, I think it's on the Economic Development website.
Yeah, I remember that one in the past. But there, you know, there's a pretty huge difference in tourism between Eastern Putnam and Western Putnam.
Yeah, clearly, well, I mean, I, I think if you were, if you're looking at county numbers, I think it's fair to assume that. The, the largest chunk of that's coming from over here.
Yeah.
Probably eighty percent of the attractions are in Phillips Town, Cold Spring, and sort of along with that, um. Has there ever been any thought given to asking Putnam County to reevaluate? The role and the budget of its tourist department, tourism department, since they are, they're in the promotion business. Pardon?
So, so what's interesting about that position is that it is a salary and benefits with no budget. The only budget for that office is a fifty thousand dollar grant from I Love New York. Um, and that program is very tightly earmarked for promotion. Um, I think that that's a great question for the current to ask, um, and I wish you would of the legislature. Um, and the, and the county executive, I think that we have. Made pretty clear that we don't need to be advertised anymore on this side, thank you, what we need is help managing the tourism. That's a great question for you to pose. In uh, in Carmel, on Glenada Avenue.
Yeah, I appreciate your delegation skills, so.
Can you say that again?
I appreciate your delegation skills.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
But yes, I'm all for understanding better what that office does, I can tell you that I have been. I've participated in Zooms with the Tourism Director, in which she has asked to use. Our Zoom because she doesn't have the budget to have any more than the free. Um. Access, so hers cuts off after thirty minutes. That's ridiculous, like, just at a base level, that gives you a sense of how thin the funding of that office is. Um, particularly given what we're saying over here about the impacts of tourism, we're begging for help managing it. Um, and that's what the Tourism Office. Can do for us is put more ads on, on the, on the Metro North cars.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm hoping Michael's the last one, are we good? Okay, second. All in favor? Wow, that. Good night.
Night, everyone.